To the Republic, for its sins, one nation, indivisible, with a root, and justice for all.
We begin the meeting with a moment of silence. And this has been the practice lately. We'll think of the people in Ukraine. And unfortunately, we'll also have to send some thoughts and prayers to the people in Texas. The, well, after that sobering note, what I'd like to do is to lighten up the meeting a little bit and announce that you'll notice there's an empty chair here tonight. Justin Evans is not able to be here because he and his wife Kathy had a baby daughter this afternoon. Eight pounds, five ounces, 21 inches. Good-sized daughter, and so he's going to be with them for a little while, and he won't be able to be here this evening. Which means that we will not be reorganizing the Board of Selectmen this evening because it's been our, it's our practice to wait for a, the first meeting at which we have a full board after the election. So, and I talked to Justin on the phone just a little while ago. He does plan to be here on June 7th, which I think is going to be our, our next meeting. So the reorganization will happen then. This meeting is being recorded and televised by WHCA. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Just a second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now is the time for a public forum. If anyone wants to speak about anything that isn't on the agenda, now is the time to do that. Approval of meeting minutes, open session, April 15th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Open session, April 26th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Open session, May 2nd, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain, I wasn't here that day. Open session, May 10th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is 7:03. Is the chief here? Ah, good. You have two minutes to give the COVID update.
Good evening. As I heard the email earlier this week, we have 69 positive cases out of 794 tests for a positivity rate of 8.69%. Just take those numbers to heart because we're not sure where they really are. The DPH is currently advising us to multiply that times eight because of all the home tests, but we're not, we're not really sure, and we have no way to tell. We've reached out and found some new means to monitor this through the wastewater going out to Brockton. I was informed by the Board of Health that there's a system that's monitoring that, so I'm working on with them to access that so I can get more realistic numbers for you all.
Great.
And I'll stop passing that out, and that is quick.
Okay.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Okay. I think we can do the, the public hearing a minute early. Now it's time for a public hearing with respect to the application of C&amp;B Retailers Incorporated doing business as Whitman News for a wine and malt packaged goods store liquor license on the premises located at 410 Bedford Street, subject to receipt of the license fee and approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. Is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is anyone here from Whitman News? Would you like to say anything? It's not time to advertise.
I have nothing to add unless, I'm sorry. Good evening. I have nothing to add unless somebody would like to ask me something.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Fine, okay. Okay. Well, I guess we're ready, we're ready to vote then. All those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
And we approved it right at 7:05, so you're good to go.
Good luck, yeah.
Thank you. We'll, we'll give you an opportunity to leave gracefully.
I can't get on the website.
What?
I can't get on the website.
Oh.
I don't know what's wrong.
Thank you. And the first item of new business is a stormwater management presentation, one that Justin Evans was particularly interested in. He had asked for it. I say gee, Justin. Sorry, we're going to miss the meeting tonight, but if you'll be able to catch it on WHCA at your convenience. Lincoln, would you like to introduce?
Yes, so Natalie Palmershim, I believe I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
Palmershim, yes.
Palmershim, sorry. Is here from Environmental Partners, the town's consultant, to discuss MS4 stormwater management. I did speak with Natalie today and suggested, since Selectmen Evans was probably most interested in the issue, I think a presentation would be probably about 10 minutes. Keep cap it at that, to talk about where we're at with stormwater and what the future holds.
Sure. I just wanted to thank you all for having us here tonight. As Lincoln mentioned, we are with Environmental Partners Group. We have been working with the DPW and Bruce for a number of years on the stormwater MS4 permit. And they wanted us to come tonight just to kind of give you guys an overview of what that looks like, what the town, you know, requirements are. And as Lincoln mentioned, my name's Natalie Palmershim. I'm a project manager with Environmental Partners. I've been there over 17 years, and I primarily work on MS4 permit compliance with municipalities throughout the state. With me today is Vern Lincoln. He's a senior scientist with EP and also primarily works on MS4 programs. So we are going to keep it brief, but we just wanted to provide an overview of what the permit entails, a summary of work Whitman has completed to date, what we're looking at for current permit tasks in year four and five of the program, what future compliance may look like with some estimated costs. And then if at any point you have any questions, please let Vern or I know, but we will end with a Q&amp;A at the end. So now I'm going to turn it over to Vern, who's going to go over the permit status and the program.
Thank you. Thank you, Natalie. My name is Vern Lincoln. I'm a senior project scientist with Environmental Partners. I've been working on the MS4 permit in some capacity for over eight years. And now I'm just going to go over a quick overview of the permit. The history of the permit dates back to the 70s with the Clean Water Act, with that focused on wastewater discharges. But they found that there was some improvements to the water quality, but there was still some issues, so they decided to release Phase 1 of the MS4 permit in the 90s. This was only covered large cities, so for Massachusetts, it covered Boston, Worcester, and Springfield. And then in 2003, Phase 2 of the MS4 permit was released, which covered smaller municipalities. Our current permit was finalized in 2016 and came into effect in July 2018. So MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. This includes all stormwater infrastructure owned by the town of Whitman. So that includes catch basins, pipes, manholes, swales, ditches, scuppers, outfalls, and more. The MS4 permit applies to communities that are considered urbanized or highly populated. This was determined based on census data from 2000 to 2010, and Whitman itself falls entirely within the MS4 area. So the permit itself is split into six MCMs or Minimum Control Measures, plus there are also additional water quality requirements that go along with that. And I'm going to give just a quick overview of each of these now. MCM1, Public Education and Outreach, requires two educational messages to be delivered by the town to each of these four audiences within the first five years. These messages can be sent through pamphlets attached to bills, posters placed in public areas, posted to the town's social media, or many other options. MCM2, Public Involvement and Participation, allows the public to read and review the stormwater management plan. And the stormwater management plan outlines everything the town agrees to do for the MS4 program. MCM3, Illicit Discharge Detection and Elimination, encompasses the sampling, mapping, and other required components listed here. So what is an illicit discharge? It's any discharge, spill, or dumping into the MS4 that is not composed entirely of stormwater. Some required components of the IDDE program include a full MS4 mapping of the drainage collection system throughout the whole town, an ordinance or regulatory mechanism to enforce the program, a written IDDE plan and annual updates that go along with that, IDDE investigations, which include outfall sampling, and then looking at their complete catchment and investigating them to see if there's any illicit discharges or connections. Then we also have annual training that needs to be completed, and annual reporting, and reporting for any sanitary sewer overflows or any illicit discharges that have been found and removed. MCM4, Construction Site Stormwater Runoff Control, regulates active construction sites. It requires erosion and sediment control measures, procedures, and inspections. The permit expects the town to track, manage, and report all this information each year in the annual report. MCM5, Post-Construction Stormwater Management, regulates the use and maintenance of stormwater BNP's or best management practices. The last MCM, MCM6, Pollution Prevention and Good Housekeeping, is where all the day-to-day public works activities come into play. It requires the development of an operations and maintenance program, which includes yearly inspections and ongoing maintenance of the town's stormwater BNP's. It also requires the development and implementation of stormwater pollution prevention plans at all municipal-owned facilities where pollutants may be exposed to stormwater. And lastly, the Water Quality Limited Water Section puts emphasis on the impaired waters and watersheds the town contributes to. So the Taunton River watershed is impaired for bacteria and pathogens, which adds additional requirements of annual messaging focused on septic maintenance and pet waste cleanup. The Taunton River watershed is also impaired for nitrogen, and the Matfield River is impaired for phosphorus, which is downstream of Meadow Brook. These impairments add annual messaging focused on fertilizer use, leaf litter, and lawn care practices. Because of the nitrogen and phosphorus impairments, the development of a nutrient source identification report is also required to identify areas of nitrogen and phosphorus removal with either a retrofit or a new stormwater BNP that is going to be installed. Now I'll turn it back over to Natalie, who will discuss Whitman's current progress and what to expect going forward.
Thank you, Vern. So just to give a quick update on what Whitman has completed to date since the 2018 start of this program. So you submitted a notice of intent to be covered, so all of your drainage is regulated to be discharged to the waters of the U.S. You developed a stormwater management plan and an IDDE plan, began some of your mapping and screening, and catchment area delineations. We are currently undergoing a bylaw and regulation review. That is something that you will probably have to pass soon so that you're in compliance. We also developed the O&amp;M program and have been doing BNP inspections and SWIP inspections for DPW. Again, annual reporting, annual training, and drafting that nutrient source ID report Vern mentioned for nitrogen and phosphorus. So just ongoing, you know, at the end of last year, Bruce reached out and just said, you know, what's the next couple of years going to look like? And we prepared a proposed scope and budget just to kind of go through, sorry, what that would be. And we put together for year four, fiscal '22, just some program administration, assuming MCM1 and MCM2 were covered by the town, looking at IDDE and some other reports that were due. That proposed scope looked at like $65,000. But due to limitations in budget availability, we kind of pared that back and are really only going to focus on things that are due in year four. So we have to get the annual report into EPA and DEP in September. We have to develop these reports on impervious cover, green infrastructure, and look at municipal retrofits. So those are due this year, and then finishing up that nutrient source ID report. And then just for planning purposes, we looked at what does fiscal '23 look like? That's year five of the program. Again, that proposed scope and budget, assuming the town is going to maintain some responsibility for MCMs, was about $72,000. And we also pared that budget back, so we have a reduced scope for years four and five at $49,000 that was passed at town meeting. So we'll be working with Bruce to come up with that contract to start in July 1 to get some of this stuff done for you guys. But we do recommend that the town, you know, in the future, find some additional funds so that you can, you know, not only complete the things that are due this year, but make progress to meet some year 10 goals. You will have to update all of your stormwater mapping by year 10. It is expected that all of your catchment, all of your catchment investigations for each outfall is completed by year 10, so there are some looming deadlines in the next four years. So what does year six and beyond look like? Again, we provide an estimated annual budget for, you know, the town of Whitman, MS4 of this size, $50,000 to $75,000 for consulting services, and that includes all of your reporting, training, some mapping improvements, the catchment investigations. If there's system vulnerability factors identified, you might have to do wet weather sampling at your outfalls, and so on and so forth with BNP inspections and SWIP inspections. So just to wrap it up, some considerations for capital planning, you know, stormwater is kind of the lost and forgotten utility, but it is important. No one really minds the drainage underground unless it's flooding or broken, so it is something to consider, investing in your stormwater infrastructure, incorporate stormwater BNP's, help, you know, your local water quality, include green infrastructure, low-impact design when you can. And then just funding and staffing considerations, there are communities throughout the municipality that are looking at developing stormwater fees or utilities so that you can generate a consistent revenue source to not only fund the MS4 consulting and permit compliance piece, but also just drainage infrastructure improvements. We've also been seeing a lot of towns posting positions for stormwater managers because DPW alone can't handle all of these components, or even, you know, creating stormwater committees so department heads that are involved can all come together and kind of help with this reporting program, so it doesn't all fall in one department. So that is a lot of information, and we would be happy to come back and give a more detailed explanation of this program if you see fit, but if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few.
Sure.
Stormwater is, basically, it's not the drinking water. It's the water that goes off the streets and stuff, goes down the drains, and it goes into streams, right?
Yes.
Does this, we have a few streams, we have a few areas that I think, probably Bruce could probably get more on this, where there's a dam that needs to be repaired in one of the ponds, there's a few pipes that are going, well, going under the streets that we may need to repair or something like that.
Okay.
Do you look at things like that, or do you report on that so we have an idea of what needs to get done and when?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, and I know in the past, and I don't know if we continue to do it, we used to, at one time, dredge out the streams that the water would go in, Bruce, at one time. We still do that?
Typically, we'll do that in the winter. If we have a particularly cold winter with not a lot of snow, we'll send a guy, we'll call Brooks, who will go through, with man tools, hand tools, not heavy equipment, just clear books.
Right, because a lot of leaves and stuff go into the streaming and, and I don't know where all the different streams are in the town of Whitman, but I know there's like, there's a, I know there are a few of them, and I know that one time we used to go and clean out all the streams to make sure the water flows and moves, so.
Yeah, I mean, annual maintenance really focuses on catch basin cleaning and street sweeping, but there is a whole other list of O&amp;M that really needs to be done on ditches, swales, and, you know, the stream beds, and making sure that everything's flowing adequately.
Yeah, I know, DPW does the catch basin cleaning, we have a truck that does it, and they, then you do it by precinct?
We try to do it by annually, like half a town, half a town each year, half a town the next year. And we also sweep the town twice a year. So the catch basins, we find aren't nearly as full as they used to be since we've owned our own sweeper. We do not salt the sand anymore in the winter for, you know, ice fighting, so that keeps them a lot cleaner. Getting maybe some of the private contractors that do some of these bigger parking lots to not use as much sand because it all flows in the same place.
Right. Do we have a no-salt area at all in Whitman, anywhere?
The no-salt area for Whitman really is right where it borders Abington or Wall Run Street.
Okay. I knew there was one area that had it, yeah, okay. Tell I have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Hey, thank, thank you, thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you so much for having us.
Thanks, Natalie.
Do you have anything to add, Bruce?
I just want to thank Natalie and Vern for coming out, and I appreciate the board's continued support of the stormwater program as it's mandatory. It's an unfunded mandate, and we did look into that. Lincoln had suggested, I called the state, they have a department of unfunded mandates, and I looked into that, and Hanson had questioned that several years ago unsuccessfully, trying to find some kind of funding to help out with this.
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
I know you said by year 10. Do we have a, is it just the total would be, just add up your totals per section here?
Yeah, I mean, I believe I provided Bruce with like a five-year plan, but I could get you guys, you know, kind of an estimate per year, just looking at.
It has fluctuated a bit.
Yeah, it's very front-loaded in the report development, so the stormwater management plan, IDDE plan, all of these reports on phosphorus removal. After this year, it really focuses on doing your mapping and all of your catchment investigations through year 10. Of course.
We, I, to my fault, but we zeroed it out one year, and because we were still working on projects from the year before, money, so I didn't think, you know, I didn't put anything up at town meeting to go forward with the stormwater. Probably should have, frankly, but we were catching up on the last year's money piece also.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Next item on the agenda under new business is the Information Technology Specialist Position. Lincoln?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Information Technology Director McNeil and I worked through a draft job description. It's in your packet for what we're calling an Information Technology Specialist Position, funded for the first time at town meeting earlier this month, happy to say. And so just wanted to get the board's feedback on that, if there's any amendments or suggestions on it, and also to get an idea if any board members would like to participate in the, in the interview process. If this proposed job description and posting looks good to the board, Josh and I would intend to get it out on the street, through the Massachusetts Municipal Association website, through informal networks of the Information Technology Directors, both on the South Shore and the North Shore. And I believe there's a trade association sort of of public, not just municipal, but sort of in general, public information technology folks, listserv, that we want to get it out on to solicit some applications.
Anyone have any responses to the description or any questions? Okay, I guess the description is good, good to go. Do you have a, sort of like a timeline as to when you're?
Yeah, I would say, since the description is good, I would say we get it out this week, out and have it be posted for a month, I would suggest, and then go through an interview process with, similarly to as we have with some non-union positions recently, of picking some number of candidates, probably about five, six maybe, around that number, having a team to interview that person. Josh and I talked about what the, what the makeup of that team would be, and I think an initial round would probably make the most sense if it was himself, a department head that uses information technology a lot, you know, probably the fire chief or police chief, if they're willing to participate, or perhaps a treasurer collector. And then probably having a second round with myself and Josh, a member of the Board of Selectmen, if you'd like to. That, that would be what we put together as a proposal.
Okay, does anyone right now know that they would like to be involved in a?
I'm not that computer savvy. Probably Justin, he's probably the most computer savvy person.
I've sat on a few. Do you want to?
I wouldn't mind, for sure. I mean, I like, I like to participate in the process, but I think Justin, it might be something he's interested in as well, so.
He's on one already.
Why don't you seduce one of, one of the two of them? Either Sean or Justin. We know that Sean, we know that Sean, we know that Sean is interested, we also know that Justin's going to be pretty busy.
Right, yeah.
But I think, you know, Sean made it, made a good, made a good point of including Justin in the, at least in the inquiry, so why don't you give him a, find out from Justin if he's interested?
I'll do it.
Otherwise, Sean?
Yeah, do you think we need two rounds, though?
It's a good question. If, well, if you were to get, if you were to, if that, if the first group of people that you've talked about, the ones without the selectmen, if they were to dwindle it down to five or six, then you had another round in which you're talking to those people, and you guys have already done it, you're adding, basically only adding a selectmen to it, right?
Essentially.
Yeah, so the finalists would come before the board anyway, that's a good point. The finalists would come before the board anyway.
Well, so that's, that's part of the question, right? Do, does the board intend to want to interview for this position or not? That's, that's part of the, the conversation.
What does Josh, what does Josh think? Do you ask Josh to?
Yeah, what he and I talked about was, was what I said, was, was, you know, a first round with him, a department head, a heavy user of IT.
Right.
Having myself either in round one or two, and then, you know, having a second round. I don't think we have a strong feeling either way of having the full board interview someone. I guess if you're asking my recommendation, I'd say probably not for this position, since it's not a department head, but it's up to the board, obviously.
Okay, what do you think, guys?
Yeah, it's fine.
So, to answer, to answer your question.
I think the department head is, should have.
Is the one that, is the one that should be driving.
Ultimately be responsible for who he's going to hire.
Right.
Remember, the board wants to sit on, I don't want to overcomplicate the process and drag it out. We know we need to get somebody in there to help Josh fairly quickly, so.
Okay, why, why don't we have the people that you talked about, someone that uses, that uses information technology, maybe another department head, you, Josh, selectmen, a select person. And that will be in only one round. And you guys can, and women, if, if, if someone is, is going to be chosen, can come down to somebody that you'd like to recommend to the board to, to hire.
Sounds good.
Maybe, maybe one round is enough.
Yes, the department heads, they're going to be into it more as far as, you know, needing the, the help on the KPI and everything, yeah.
Right, I mean, it ultimately is Josh's employee.
Right.
Right.
So I think he should have the ultimate say of.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I agree.
Who he hires.
So we're kind of clear then. Next item on the agenda is act on the recommendation of the Council on Aging to nominate Mary Holland to serve as the town's representative on the Board of Directors for Old Colony Elders Services for the period July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
Very good. I'll make that motion.
There's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, excellent.
Act on a recommendation to appoint Rob Picharilly. Is that the way you pronounce it?
Picharilly.
Picharilly, pitch, Picharilly, Picharilly, to the Building Commissioner position. Now, this, this, actually, this search process is similar to the one that we ended up with just now.
Correct.
We had a, had a group of people, narrowed it down to one person, you're recommending one person to the board to hire.
Yeah, that's correct.
And it's, okay. Just to, just to be clear, that's, that's, that's showing some kind of uniformity here. So that's, that's good. Is there, is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay. Bob, would either you or Lincoln like to talk about why you're recommending Mr. Picharilly?
We had interviewed five candidates. All of them were qualified. Three of them were fairly decent, and one was way above the rest. He was formerly a building commissioner in Halifax, he's from Halifax, and now he is in Harwich, which is a long ride. So this is, this is somebody that I had sought to apply for the job, and he did, and he was the best candidate, so I highly recommend that this board appoints him.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
No, I read the resume, it was very good.
Okay, then I'll.
If I could just briefly add to that, which is, so Bob has graciously offered and volunteered
If I could just briefly add to that, which is, so Bob has graciously offered and volunteered to stay so that there is some overlap with the candidate. And so, if the board, you know, chooses to appoint him, and so we would have Bob in place until June 30, hopefully, and obviously in the executive session, if you choose to appoint Mr. Pitcherilly, you can have a conversation about what the town's offer might be.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, here, yes.
Just so we... I know we're going into an executive session to discuss this. Do we want to hold off the appointment until we figure out...
An executive session is to discuss the terms.
The terms.
Right, right.
I believe you should make the appointment if you choose to in the open session, and then you can have a contingent on successful negotiation of the...
Yeah, I think so, too.
...employment offer.
Okay, so is it clear then? We're voting on it, on the candidate, but his hiring will be subject to negotiations, basically.
Right, okay.
And we'll be having an executive session later on to discuss the terms to offer.
Okay.
Okay, all those in...
I'll amend my motion to stipulate those... stipulate that, okay?
Subject to negotiation.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Discuss the use of the donated land west of Hogue Memorial Drive.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the... This item came up. If, very brief history, there is a... Thank you, Ron. It's a piece of land to the... To the west of Hogue Memorial Drive that developer, Mr. Steve Egan, donated to the town, and the town accepted that donation at the January town meeting. Last week, the chair of the school, Middle School Building Committee, Fred Small, brought up the possibility of that piece of land being included when the designer, the chosen designer for the middle school, is looking at options for a renovated or new middle school. Some of the applicants to be the designer for a new renovated middle school had as part of their presentations and their proposals the incorporation of some of the land around the existing school building, and specifically incorporating the wetlands that are there. And so, you know, so this... To be clear, this piece of land and other, a few other surrounding pieces of land are under the control of the Board of Selectmen. So, it would be up to, you know, the Board of Selectmen as to whether or not this land or any other pieces of land in there might want to be... The town might want to include as a possibility as the designer does their work about what a new renovated middle school looks like. I'm not sure why it's not up. There's a map. Seems as though the...
I can't get online either, so.
Yeah, seems as though the...
I have it on high speed.
Hmm.
Let me try turning on the...
Take a little break for technical difficulties.
It's turned off or something.
What we need is an assistant technology person. Oh, maybe I'll be able to get online now.
Looks like it's turned on.
Seems to have automatically gone off when the other folks unplugged. But...
I see it's trying to load.
I can describe it briefly. If folks know the middle school property there off of Corthell Avenue, as you come in, there...
Do we want to wait until it goes up?
Yeah, here we go.
Goes up, okay.
Always positive.
Shut the lights off, maybe?
Can you get it? You getting it?
No.
Okay.
Just need to be another, is on a report or something? No, it was already on, yeah.
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 Okay, there we go. So, I'll describe what the color codes mean here. So, yellow is the existing school property. So, here is the existing building. Here's Corthell Avenue.
Right.
And here are the fields, right, both to the side here, and then in the back here. The green areas throughout are wetlands as designated by the State Department of Environmental Protection. So, just FYI, those are designated wetlands. The red is the land in question to the west of Hogue Memorial and Kenwood Drive, of the land that Mr. Egan donated and that the town accepted at town meeting in January. The blue, just for informational purposes and because I think it's, you know, certainly relevant for the conversation, are existing other pieces of town-owned land in the vicinity. So, this is the largest piece here. Obviously, there are three parcels here, one, two, three. There's one small parcel here, just to the right of the existing driveway into the school. There's one small parcel here, as you can see, farther west of Hogue Memorial to the east of Auburnville Way here. So, that's the overview. The specific suggestion from Mr. Small was specifically this land, the piece that Mr. Egan had donated. But obviously, you know, that could only be part of the school consideration as the designer does their work if, for example, at least this parcel also was designated as a possibility of being used for the school, because it only connects to the school property through this parcel as well, if you see. So, that's the general outline of the area and the request. Obviously, happy to take any questions, thoughts, if there's any other piece of information that any member of the board would like.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, wetlands. If you take away, you have to replace it somewhere else, right? Conservation have to get, weigh in on this decision?
Likely so, yes. So, that's certainly something... So, yes, as a general rule, if something is in wetlands, there'd be some sort of wetlands replication process that would be needed. If, I think it depends certainly on what a designer comes up with as an option. You know, if it's some sort of trails, you know, so at least one of the designer, one of the prospective designers suggested that it was, it might be trails as part of a science project going through existing wetlands, so maybe that wouldn't require wetlands replication. It's, who knows?
They're not talking about buildings, are they?
Dan, we're not even here yet. We're not even remotely close to them asking for more land yet. We just actually hired the designer. The committee, I did miss the last meeting due to my daughter having COVID, but the committee hasn't voted on this, discussed this yet. So, we're not at this point where they'd be asking for more land.
So, then what type of...
What was Fred thinking about?
What decisions your board looking, your committee looking for us to make tonight?
Evidently, this was a conversation between the town administrator and the chair. I don't recall this being discussed or on the agenda of our committee meeting, so...
Mr. Small brought it up in the committee, and I suggested to him, in the committee meeting. I wasn't expecting that. And I suggested to him that, you know, before anything was even going to have, be a conversation, that the Board of Selectmen would, as a very beginning point, would need to weigh in on whether or not this was...
So, this is like a heads up that they're looking for some... They're looking for...
That's all.
They're not looking.
They're not even looking for it.
They haven't done the site work yet.
Yeah, because it doesn't, you know, it looks like it's far enough away from the building that, what would you use it for? Other than trails and running trails and things like that, maybe, but other than that...
But we'd just be spinning wheels now, talking...
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I think. Yeah. Maybe we should wait until there's some more specific work done by...
Yeah, I agree.
By the designer.
Yes, yeah. You can let Fred know that. Thank you for the...
Heads up.
Yeah, thank you for the one. Anyone else? Okay, set the June meeting schedule. June 7 will be the first one. Does anyone have a preference for the second one? I will not be here on the 21st, but that doesn't mean that we don't have to have a meeting that night. I mean, you can have a meeting without my presence.
Unless we get it back to that 21st, it'd be the only other day I could do as well.
Yeah, good.
You're... Oh, I'm sorry.
But I'm also away with you the 24th on.
You're away the 24th on?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm away the 28th, so...
Okay.
So, 7th and 21?
7th.
Yeah, yeah, 7th and 21. Okay, good.
Justin can make the 7th.
Justin can make the 7th, right? Okay, all business. Discuss the hiring process for a facilities manager position. Lincoln?
Yes, so just went to the conversation at the meeting two weeks ago. This, the facilities manager position that was funded at town meeting has been out and posted per our personnel policies requirement that it be so. We have, as of just today, received one application for that, so I'm pleased about that. I just wanted to give the board an update on that.
When was it posted?
It was posted a week and a half ago, I believe.
Okay, and it needs to be posted for how long, according to our...
Yeah, according to our personnel policies, it's either 10 days or a lesser amount of time if I determine that that's okay. So, I'm fine with closing it now. If it's important to the board that we keep it open for the full 10 days, that's fine, of course.
When did it get posted?
I believe it was a week and a half ago.
A date? Do we have a date?
I'm not, I don't have the date in front of me. I know, I believe it was a week and a half ago.
Posted it?
I did. Up on the town, on, in the bulletin board at town hall.
Not on the website, though.
I believe it is up on the website, I believe.
I couldn't find it. I know the clerk posted it on Facebook last night. Other than that, it hadn't been posted.
Well, if there's some confusion about how long it's been up, we should at least have it up, be up for a week, probably. And the first thing, first time you saw it, Randy, was last night?
On the clerk's, town clerk's Facebook page was the first time I saw it, so...
Okay.
It's been up on the bulletin board downstairs per our personnel policies for a week and a half. I believed it was up on the website, and I'll confirm and find out what day it was posted up there.
I would think the safest thing to do would be to leave it open until... Until... We should be able to act, we should be able to act on it at our next meeting. Does that make sense? June 7? We're not going to be able to act on it until June 7 anyway. So, we could actually leave it... What's next week's? Next, is this week June 3?
May 31st.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead. I'm all crazy here. And why don't we leave it open until May 31st? And then there'll be, and then there'll be a week before the 7th, once you can make some decisions.
Well, this is posting on the town website as far as town employees.
And up on the message board, on the court board downstairs on the first floor.
Right, we have to operate the town employees before we go outside.
Yeah, and that has to be posted 10 days, correct?
Right.
By the union contractor?
Yep.
This is not a union position. This wouldn't be...
It's a non-union position.
It's not a union position, and so our personnel policies say that it's 10 days or a lesser amount of time if the town administrator, me, deems that appropriate.
Okay, what do you think, folks?
Yeah.
What?
10 day...
31st, is it?
Huh?
31st?
Yeah.
31st, be closed on the 31st, and that'll give you enough, obviously enough time to make a recommendation by this meeting on the 7th.
You're going to have a committee to listen to whoever applies? I'd like to be honored if we are.
Yeah, so certainly the board could provide some input if there's more than one application as to what the process would be. If there is more than one serious applicant, I'd suggest that we do a similar process to the building commissioner position of having myself, a member of the Board of Selectmen, if you so choose, and at least one department head that frequently uses...
The buildings.
The buildings, yeah. Which is everyone, obviously, but some to a greater extent than others.
I'd like to be honored.
All right, we're going to designate Dan as is our connection. And a department head of you guys choosing can winnow down this group of applicants to somebody that you'll recommend to us on June 7.
They're what they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's Dan, Lincoln, and somebody else.
Building department?
Bob.
Bob.
That's not Bob, that's...
Mr. Curran.
Mr. Curran? Yeah, that makes sense. See here?
I left.
He left.
That's Tim.
He looks a lot like Bob. That's not Bob, yeah. Okay, clear?
Sounds good.
Okay. Yay. Town administrator evaluation, as promised. We had done an evaluation of the town administrator, all five selectmen at the time, went through a town administrator performance review, and the town administrator, Lincoln, has the copies of those reviews, those five reviews, and each one of us has copies of those five reviews. And I was tasked to report to the board what they call a consensus overview. And I did the best I could to try to figure out exactly what a consensus overview was. I have a two-page consensus overview. I'd like to read it to you so at least it goes into the record, and then we'll go from there. And by going from there, if any of you wish to, or if Lincoln wishes to talk to any of you, or if you want to talk to Lincoln about the performance evaluation, it would take some time to do it. Next steps after that would be setting goals and objectives for next year, for next year's performance evaluation. But, anyway, the data, this is to the Board of Selectmen and Lincoln Heinemann Town Administrator, from myself dated May 23. I wrote it, well, I wrote it on May 23. The instrument used for the board's review, and you all know what it looks like, of the town administrator's performance includes seven areas of responsibility. It's a nine-page instrument. And each area includes a number of factors, ranging from, quote, exhibits honest and ethical behavior, unquote, to, quote, maintains effective communications with state and federal elected representatives. Those general areas are listed below, with each factor rated on a scale of 1 to 5, and the areas are the following. The first is professionalism, and there were nine factors to evaluate. Each of us had to give a score of 1 to 5 for each of those nine factors. Board support and relations, there were five factors. Financial management and planning, six factors. Planning and organization, three factors. Organizational leadership, professional management, eight factors. Public relations and communications, four factors. Community leadership, four factors. So, there are seven areas, and the scores for each one of those areas, as you averaged out the, how each of us rated the town administrator in those areas. Under professionalism, three. Board support and relations, 3.3. Financial management, 3.7. Planning and organization, 3.3. Organizational leadership and professional management, 2.7. Public relations, communications, 3.3. Community leadership, 3.2. Then we were asked at the end to give an overall rating of 1 to 5. And the overall rating, when you averaged out the five, a selectman, was 2.8. While ratings of individual factors, those 39 items spread among the above areas of seven areas of responsibility, yield an acceptable score, the six out of seven, with six out of seven areas falling in the meets, quote, meets expectations range, and those are the... and those are the ones from three to 3.7. The overall rating falls in the, quote, improvement needed range, 2.8. This seeming conundrum probably reflects that individual board members give more weight to the value of some factors than they do to others. Indeed, it's clear from their written remarks in the comments sections that the board as a whole approves of the way Lincoln presents the budget to town meeting. And I'm quoting one of the, one of the board members here. Of his strengths are, quote, "building a budget and projecting finances," unquote. But it is also clear that the board wished he were more attentive to attending to day-to-day matters. And I'm now quoting someone else who said, under areas for improvement included, quote, "return emails and phone calls in a more timely manner," unquote. In summary, reflected in the board's remarks and numerical scores, Lincoln performed in an acceptable manner overall and in a highly commendable manner with his handling of budget presentation. It was a difficult year and a half, particularly with COVID lurking in the background, and that should be taken into consideration as well. If he were to improve his own time management, priority setting, and meaningful communication, and in parentheses, and the board can help set specific goals to assist him in these matters. And that would happen as we put together the goals and objectives for, for next year. Then we see an even more successful year ahead. Continuing to work on the strategic plan, board and school district relations, finding a third person to work in the selectmen's office, and following through on work with capital projects, DPW, building, middle school are important as well. And that's the consensus review. What we need to do is all of us to sign that you've seen it, you've accepted it, we've seen it, we've given it. And we'll do that at the next meeting when all the board members are here. We'll, we'll sign it. If any, if, if, Lincoln, if you want some, you know, more feedback, individual feedback, contact us individually if you'd like. And if any of you want to speak to him about the evaluation, speak to him. Because the, the, the reason for an evaluation is to improve performance. And I'm sure that we can, we can work out a set, a very specific goals and objectives for, for next year that will help out a lot.
When do we set the goals and objectives for next year?
We'll be doing it this summer.
This summer?
Yeah. The, the goals and objectives that he was measured on this year were set last September. We agreed on them last September. It's, it's, this is a little odd because we've had Lincoln with us for a year and a half. But the, this covers one year of the, one year of that period. It covers July to, to June. And actually, it doesn't cover June because this is May. But we needed to get, we wanted to get this done before the current Board of Selectmen changed.
This has been a difficult year. Very difficult year.
Anybody else? Okay. More, more to be said later. Town administrator's report, Sewer Force Main.
Yes, so just wanted to mention a few things on this. So the project has been stalled a little bit because of the, the supply chain issues that we've all heard about many times throughout many months. On Thursday and Friday, there was PVC pipe delivered to C. Naughton, our contractor for the project. They, beginning yesterday, are getting out there on Auburn, Auburn Street to really get deep into that project of working along on Auburn Street. The other piece I wanted to mention was regarding finances. So the, the largest piece of that is regarding, in addition to, so as a quick reminder, the project came in under contract with C. Naughton at a little more than $12 million. The, a couple of pieces that are factored into that. One, as we've discussed previously, we received the really great news of $1.9 million in loan forgiveness because of ARPA monies from the state revolving fund. So that's certainly great news. In addition, we talked briefly before regarding the hope that a piece of the Sewer Force Main going through Brockton would be able to be done via trench rather than directional drilling at a significant savings. Last week, the State Department of Environmental Protection approved that. So we expect that that'll be in about another million-dollar savings, which is very good news. And the, the other piece regarding financing that I want to mention and that will be for the board's decision here coming up in the next few months is what portion, if any, of our ARPA monies, both through the state and then directly to the town, might the board want to allocate towards this project to reduce the impact on sewer raid pairs? So we expect that we will have approximately $4 million available for that purpose after the, after the expected and we're working, we'll be working with the chief to project out what we think COVID expenses might be going forward into fiscal year, into December of 2024. So that's one factor. We want to reserve some of those monies to respond, respond to COVID, or that's what I'd recommend. The other piece is, in the, in the recent union contracts, there were American Rescue Plan Act bonuses that were included. So that eats into that a little bit. But still, the, the vast chunk of the monies that we know we will be receiving from the federal government, we directly in Whitman, and the monies that we expect will be receiving through Plymouth County from the federal government is approximately $4 million. So just want to alert the board to that. If there's any, you know, if there's any pieces of information or questions you have as, as we get towards a decision on that, as the board gets towards a decision on that, please let me know. But that decision is coming up in the next few months to determine that. And then finally, I just wanted to make sure that the board knew and that the public knows that there's a weekly update on our website regarding what, where the construction is at, what's been done, what's going to be worked on this, that week, what traffic flow might mean in terms of road closures. We don't expect any significant road closures in the immediate term. That is to say, a whole road closed down, but one lane closed, you know, and having folks go back and forth in, you know, in terms of being, being directed by a police officer. So if you go on whitman-ma.gov and search up Sewer Force Main project, you can find those weekly reports and information on where C. Naughton is working.
Okay, Whitman Middle School Building Project.
Yes, so talked about it a little bit earlier. So last week, the Whitman Middle School Building Committee finalized a contract with the chosen designer for the project, AI3. So the designer is beginning their work in coming up with options for what a new or renovated middle school might look like. And the costs attendant to that. The, one of the things that came together towards the end as that contract was coming to a conclusion and getting ready to be approved by the full middle school building committee, if the board recalls, there were, there were concerns from Town Council, Nancy, who's here now, that were, that were there when the owner's project manager contract was being negotiated specifically about making sure that the town is indemnified for, for any kind of legal action that might happen as a result of the owner's project manager. And then in addition, to make it clear who the owner of the property is, the town, not the school district, in the documents. Went through, you know, a big process back and forth with the Mass School Building Authority at that time. But happy to say with, with Nancy's help and in working with Colliers and the Chair of the, of Whitman Middle School Building Committee, the, the MSBA did approve the similar language that's in the owner's project manager to protect the town in terms of indemnification and making it clear who the actual owner of the building is. So those protections are also included in this final design project. So the project continues to move forward with the designer.
Okay, and DPW Building Project?
Yes, so the DPW Building Committee has met three times. Met twice after town meeting earlier this month since, a little more than, then since $1.1 million was passed at town meeting to, to move forward with the project, to hire an owner's project manager and to get a design for a new DPW building on Essex Street. With the committee's input, I drafted an RFP for what, to seek owner's project managers, applicants for that project. We'll be meeting with the DPW Building Committee again tomorrow evening to take a, hopefully a final look at that so we can get it out on the street and seek proposals from owner's project managers so that we can continue to move forward with the project. One other, just for your information, last week at their meeting, the Department of Public Works Commissioners rescinded their designation of Ken Layler to the committee and chose David Cook instead. Ken's going to be traveling a lot this summer and so he wanted to pass that torch on to David to serve on the, on the, excuse me, the DPW Building Committee.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Memorial Day Parade.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure, again, everyone knows about it and the folks at home know that the Legion is, for after a three-year hiatus, very excited that the Memorial Day Parade is back and will be run by the Legion. The veteran service officer and myself have been in contact with the Legion to make sure they have everything they, they need to make it a successful event. Parade kicking off at 9:30 AM on Monday.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, we need to go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exemption 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I, I, just regarding the Whitman Summer Concerts.
Ah, yes.
I apologize.
That's right.
Just briefly, so a request came in this morning from Don Byers, the Cultural Council Chair, to be able to use the town hall auditorium in case of rain on the Thursday night concerts. It's every single Thursday night from June 2nd until July 14th. So just be seeking a approval from the board. If you approve of that, to use the town hall auditorium in case it's raining. I did check in with our excellent town hall custodian who is willing to staff those, which is very much appreciated on short notice. And so it does work for the town in, as far, so long as the board approves that request.
Your motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, we've done that in the past, so this is.
All, all is in favor of allowing it to be dry? Okay, now we can continue with the executive session reading. The other exemption, exemption is for number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Zero motion to go into executive session. Second.
Yes.
We will be coming in open session, returning to open session only to adjourn. Voice vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, we're in executive session.